Good morning. Call to order, the December 21st meeting of the Sling County Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Absolutely. Now will please stand for our flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we now move in. Oh, first off, Brad, our IT director, if we have any outside participants, you can give instructions on how to participate.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brad.
Constituents that wish to participate in this, that are connected to the Zoom session and wish to participate in the meeting are looking for the raise hand feature. On the newer clients, the raise hand function is toward the bottom of the screen on the Zoom toolbar. On the older clients, if you select Participants and look in the lower right-hand corner of the screen, that is where the raise hand function will be. By raising your hand in the meeting, that lets the host know that you would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Now we'll move into our citizens' input. This is on any items that you want to bring forward that are not on today's agenda and should be limited to about three minutes. Anyone want to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of prior minutes as presented for 1213 and 1214, approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of cereal malt beverage license for the livestock and expo, approval of accounts payable as presented, approval of payroll as presented, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Do any commissioners wish to add or delete anything off the?
No.
The consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will stand as written. We now move into action items. Item number one.
RFA 279-21, Sling County Vaccination and Breakthrough Emergency Paid Sick Leave with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act, also known as the FF-CRA, was mandated emergency paid sick leave to certain private employers and all public employers. That mandate ended at the end of 2020. From January 1, 21 to September 30, 21, Sling County offered a Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave, which was a combination of both the FF-CRA and the Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave, for a total of 80 hours for those that are affected or were affected by COVID symptoms awaiting testing results or to comply with quarantine or isolation orders when they weren't able to telework. Both of these paid leave programs were reimbursable through federal COVID financial relief funds. Due to the increased numbers and positive cases, this request is to offer up to 80 hours of combined FF-CRA, Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave, and then adding a new one on, which would be a Sling County Breakthrough Emergency Paid Sick Leave for employees that have been fully vaccinated pursuant to the CDC definition at the time of the request for the leave time. Allow a reasonable amount of paid leave time to receive the vaccine during work hours, not to exceed two hours. Any time needed beyond that, two hours would come from the employee's own paid sick leave accruals. And then the third item is to up to one regularly scheduled shift to recover from any adverse side effects of the COVID vaccines taken within 24 hours of receiving the vaccine. Any leave time needed in excess of that regular shift would come off the employee's accrued paid leaves. This plan is recommended to be effective January 1, 22 through June 30 of 2022. The alternatives for action is to approve the plan for this Sling County Breakthrough Emergency Paid Sick Leave from January 1, 22 to June 30, 22. Do not approve the plan or direct staff to come back with a different option. The staff recommendation is to approve the plan for the Breakthrough Emergency Paid Sick Leave. No additional funds above what has already been approved for budgeted for 22 salaries as needed, and this paid leave would be an eligible expense under the American Rescue Plan Act. And I'm available for questions.
Do any commissioners have any questions or comments for Marilyn? Does anyone in the public wish to address this? Seeing none, I turn to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the plan as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 279-21, Sling County Vaccination and Breakthrough Emergency Paid Sick Leave. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And item number two.
RFA 283-21, Wichita State University Salary Benefit Survey Contract with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Okay, Marilyn.
Good morning again. On November 29, 2021, Sling County sent out invitations to 19 firms proposing proposals to perform a salary and benefits survey in early 2022 with the results available for the 2023 budget process. Eight proposals were received by the December 13 deadline, and those are as follows there. Put those in order from smallest to largest. While we've had a long-term relationship with the Archer Company, we would like the opportunity to have a different perspective and updated approach to our compensation program. Our last survey was completed in 2016. Our recommendation is to go with option number two with Wichita State University. This request is for approval and signature to enter into a contract with the Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State University. The contract has been reviewed and approved by county council. The alternatives for action is to approve and sign the contract, do not approve the contract or delay decision, and request additional information. Our recommendation is to approve and sign the contract. For the financial impact, I'm going to ask Phil to jump in on this portion.
And this was originally discussed with the commissioners on November 23 as one of three end-of-year opportunity items, and at that time, I expressed confidence that we could bring in all three of those items for $90,000. That confidence was based upon numbers that did not take into account the current state of inflation in the world. So both the salary survey and the time clock plus have come in a little bit higher than what we knew, and so the total cost to bring in all three of these items is now up to $98,000. I will say that there is sufficient funding within the general courthouse to cover that $8,000 difference, but I did want to alert the commission to that, full disclosure, so you have that information before you decide to approve. If you're comfortable with that additional cost, we do have the agreement with CIC for the time clock plus as well that we can bring to you next Tuesday. Otherwise, the recommendation would be that we go ahead and go forward with this item today and that we defer the time clock plus into the TIP portion of the 2023 budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the financial impact.
Questions of Phil or Marilyn?
My, it's not a question, it's a comment for Marilyn, or for both that matter, but not on the the funding, but I like the perspective that you're going after, a different, you know, mindset, a different channel of thoughts on this proposal. I think the Archer's study, the Archer Company, has been a contentious thing for the commissioners for the last five years that we've been doing it, you know, between the representatives of the county employees and ourselves and bargaining units and so forth. That has been a difficult one to deal with for me, and I'm really happy that you're looking at, even though it's going to cost a little bit more, I'm happy that we're going with a different perspective, and there's a lot of background from Wichita State University in this field, so I'm happy with that.
And I'd like to add that there are some other counties that are using them for their compensation survey at this time as well.
Anyone else? Comment or question? Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve by signature the Wichita State University Services Agreement as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve RFA 283-21, Wichita State University Salary Benefit Survey Contract. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Item number three.
RFA 282-21, Bid Award for 2022 Aggregate and Aggregate Hauling with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm here today to discuss and take action on the Sling County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bids for aggregate and aggregate hauling. Sealed bids were opened on November 30 at 11:00 a.m. Seven aggregate producers and six aggregate haulers submitted bids. Aggregate material and aggregate hauling are bid separately. However, we must evaluate the combined material and hauling costs in order to determine the total cost to Sling County. So in your packet, you should have a table of the bid tabs. So for the alternatives for action would be, one, to accept the unit prices for aggregate and aggregate haul as staff recommends, two would be to accept the unit prices for different aggregate producers and haulers, or three would be to reject all bids. Staff recommends to award two different producers for SS3 material, and our SS3 material is our crushed limestone road rock with a maximum size of three quarters of an inch. The first producer or quarry would be Harshman Construction out of Florence, Kansas, and the hauler would be Gary Johnson Trucking for a total combined cost of $20.34. However, we'd also like to award a second producer of the SS3, and that's Midstates Materials out of Big Springs, Kansas, with Pearson Construction as a hauler for $20.45. And the reason for that is that the Big Springs is over by the Lawrence, the Compton area, and so it's a harder rock, and so I think that it would provide a better value, even though they're not the low bid, it would provide the better value just because of the hardness of the rock, and so that's why we would also like to award that material. For SS5 material, and that is our standard road rock that we use on the majority of our roads, and has a maximum size of an inch and a half, and of course, it's also a crushed limestone, we recommend to award it to Ham Incorporated out of Grantville, Kansas, with Pearson Construction as a hauler for a combined bid of $17.70. Our SS7 is a sand. We recommend to award that to Johnson Sand here in Salina for $9.12. Because it's local, we, the Road and Bridge Maintenance, would go pick up that material at the sand pit. Another sand that we would like to award is our SS8 sand, and that's also from Johnson Sand here in Salina for an aggregate unit cost of $7.93. And then finally, we have our AB3 material, and that's again a crushed limestone, but that's for our aggregate base, and that's what the AB stands for, and so we'll put that down as we're building up a road. The producers would be Ham Incorporated, also out of Grantville, Kansas, with Pearson Construction as a hauler for a combined bid of $18 a ton. So the budget impact, really for our 2022 budgets, for our sand, which is our SS8 and SS7, we've got a budget of $185,000 for our crushed road rock, which would be our SS5 and our SS3. We've got a budget of $385,000. And for AB3 is we've got a budget of $165,000, and then the combined contractual hauling for all of the materials, $370,000. So this request for action is asking the commissioners to accept the unit prices as shown, or as I've provided. Quantities purchased throughout the year mainly depend on the weather, so however, the total purchases will not exceed the budget that I've just presented.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners for Justin or comments?
The SS3, is that the rock that we got so many complaints about this year? The hardness, or size, or the sharpness, or the tire punctures and so forth? Is that the same rock?
No, that's typically SS5 material, and that's what, yeah, the Maintenance Division puts down on all our gravel roads. They use the SS3 material when they're working in, you know, they're putting material in developed areas like subdivisions for those roads we maintain, also the unincorporated towns around the county, they use that rock for those purposes. So it's typically a lesser quantity.
So the SS5 is the same rock that we've had all the trouble?
Correct.
Complaints about, I should say, and I don't know about trouble, but?
Correct.
Puncturing tires is an issue I've heard about a lot, including myself, they got a couple of tires punctured by that rock on the roads. I'm kind of disappointed that we're not changing that a little bit, but I don't know what the options are.
And this is what the Maintenance Division has requested from me to bid out this year, and their plan is to treat the roads very similar to what they've been doing the last couple of years.
What's the difference between SS7 and 8?
So the SS8, and it's really, it's a gradation, so it's, you know, we need so much of this size of gravel, so much of this size of gravel, all the way down to the very, very fines. The SS8 sand will meet the specifications of really what our naval sand is, but it doesn't have a lot of the larger aggregate to it, so that's just what they mine out, and it kind of meets that specifications. The SS7, what we call, they have to sweeten the mix, and so what they'll have to do is they'll have to bring in larger aggregate and mix it with our native sand, so we get a little bit better aggregate, or bigger aggregate in with that, and that's why there's the cost difference there is, because they've got to add material to our native stuff.
Justin, I've noticed that it looks like at the yard that we have quite a large stockpile of materials out there. Is the winter, spring our big usage times for that? And I know it's?
Winter, yeah, winter's tricky because it all kind of depends on the winter. You know, if we've got a cold and dry winter like we've had the last couple of years, you know, they don't use near as much material, and of course, spring is always that time where you use a lot of material, and you're trying to get that material out on the roads, you know, before it rains, and so when it does rain, that's when you need the material there. And so I would say that's, definitely, spring is definitely our biggest usage. Winter can be, it just kind of depends on the winter.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bids for 2022 Aggregate and Aggregate Hauling as listed in RFA 282-21 and recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Item number four.
RFA 278-21, Resolution 21-2351, Rural Fire District's Board of Trustee Appointments with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of Rural Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 to request reappointment for the names attached to the resolution attached to this RFA, for reappointments for board members for the Board of Trustees. These Board of Trustees will serve a two-year term, starting January 1 of 2022 to December 31 of 2024. These Board of Trustees each serve their fire district that they represent, they oversee operations of each district on behalf of the commission, and they are all volunteers. They, most boards are made up of members between the numbers of five and nine. Staff recommends the approval of the appointments. All these individuals volunteer their times to serve their respective districts, not only as volunteer fighter fighters, but also as Board of Trustee members.
Hey, one question. Do they have term limits on the board?
Two years, and then they're either up for reappointment, or another individual can take over.
Okay, but they never?
Yes, they can be reappointed indefinitely if the board?
Okay, I just wondered why there were no new appointments from any of the fire districts?
Correct.
They're all reappointments?
Yes.
Well, we appreciate the effort and the time they spend being involved in their fire districts. Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Seeing none, does the public have any questions, comments? If not, I'll turn it back to the commissioner for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2351 as presented by staff. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve RFA 278-21, Resolution 21-2351, Rural Fire District's Board of Trustee Appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to item number five.
Resolution 21-2353, Local Disaster Emergency Declaration with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning again. I am here on behalf of the severe weather event that we had on Wednesday, December 15 of 2021. The chairman of the Board of County Commissioners verbally declared on Wednesday, December 15 of 2021, a state of local disaster declaration for Sling County, Kansas, where certain conditions caused by severe weather and damaging winds will and have imminently threatened and caused widespread and severe damage and injury, thankfully no loss of life, to Sling County and the cities within it. I do have a damage assessment update, if you would be interested in that. It was a busy weekend of assessing all of the cities and our schools. I would like to note that the county's threshold for damage is roughly $222,000. The state of Kansas is roughly $4.8 million. That threshold needs to be met for even the minimal consideration by FEMA. As it stands right now with Road and Bridge, the airport, and 305, we've already met our threshold of about $367,144 worth of damage. I am still waiting, I know the cities have assessments being conducted today and tomorrow. They do have damage to their roofs, HVAC systems, buildings destroyed, same with 306 and 307 for the school districts. I would also like to note that FEMA uses the threshold just as a starting point. They also look at the impact to the communities and the community resources when it comes to any FEMA assistance past that. So as it stands on a local level, we have met our threshold. Now we're just waiting to see if the state of Kansas meets theirs, and from there, we'll progress up the chain to the federal level. For individuals that have any damage to their homes, I would recommend reaching out. I know Catholic Charities on Monday opened up their disaster grant. I would encourage you to apply to that. I know that Salvation Army and a lot of the nonprofits are offering any sort of assistance that they possibly could at this time, and also a lot of church communities have stepped up. If you need any assistance, I've gotten quite a wide array of requests, from cleaning up limbs to broken out car windows. So I understand that not always does insurance cover those things, but if assistance can be met, those organizations would be the best way to go. Because waiting on the federal government to do anything is not going to happen very quickly. I would also like to note that my office is available and open. If anybody needs any help preparing themselves or families for future disasters, we are more than willing to help. I know that we had at least two CO2 exposure cases of makeshift heaters during the disaster. And for my sanity and the fire departments, we just want to make sure that everyone's heating their homes safely and properly.
I'll note that you did have a, you did open Webster Conference Center for emergency housing there for a few days to.
Yes, we had 60 residents take us up on either just the day or the evening stay.
All right, any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Michelle, the declaration of a local disaster emergency, in watching the city commission meeting yesterday, commissioners were reminded or criticized, however you want to say it, of the yes/no vote, and how quickly the county reacted in stating a disaster emergency in effect. And for clarification purposes, on a local disaster emergency, don't we declare that? Isn't part of it is to be able to access state resources to help us?
Correct.
So I mean, I feel like the city was unfairly criticized for that because they don't have that.
Correct.
Opportunity to dig into state funds. Is that correct?
It goes through the county, so it's.
Okay.
A ladder one goes through the next level.
So the citizens that were criticizing the city and making note of the yes/no vote were incorrect because the reason that we're, that's the reason that the county does it, is to access those state.
Correct.
Resources.
And so the city can also incorporate into that. Because I can tell you during the flooding in 2019, even though insurance covered the pumps that Gypsum lost to the flood, they were a significant portion of the county meeting their threshold. Their pumps were anywhere between $20,000 to $30,000 to replace.
Well, in watching the social media and so on and so forth throughout the week and the updates that came from the administrative offices within the county itself, I want to commend you and your staff for what a beautiful job that you did. And you were even mentioned at some state levels of the job that your department did and how you handled this, and how quick we were on it, and the availability of meals, the availability of rooms, and how that was handled. And I just can't say that how proud I am to have you and our staff part of that, getting that job done. So nice job.
Thank you, but I am starting to feel like bad luck. This never used to happen before I started.
You have been involved with you.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2353 as presented by staff. Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. That we adopt Resolution 21-2353, Local Disaster Emergency Declaration. All commissioners in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries four zero. Item number, where we at? Number six?
RFA 280-21, ARPA Water Wastewater Grants with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Haynes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. So as part of our ARPA Framework Plan adopted by the commission on August 31st, we wanted to target about half a million dollars in funding for local water and wastewater infrastructure grants for those jurisdictions that might have needs that have been unmet for some time. So in furtherance of that, this commission approved an implementation plan on September 28th, and we got that information out to the public and affected districts. Applications were received on November 29th. We ended up receiving 20 applications from 15 different entities, totaling $799,302.54. Pursuant to the plan approved by the commission, I did appoint a committee of three reviewers with water and wastewater expertise. And I would like to sincerely thank Jeff Crispin with the City of Hayes, Martha Tasker with the City of Salina, and Wayne Scritchfield with Saline County Engineering Office for being that committee. That committee ranked all of the applications according to the criteria. And there were criteria that were listed in the grant guide that, you know, a point ranking system that added up to 100 potential points for each application. Some of the emphasis that I would say that the committee placed was really around opportunities to extend service to people who are not currently served by public water or wastewater, and also address water quality or public health concerns. So I think you can really see that reflected in the recommended grants. They're all really dealing with some basic infrastructure needs in their respective cities or districts. There are a number of other folks that were not recommended for funding, and not that those were not worthy projects, but they just did not rank as highly in the committee process according to those published criteria. So the ultimate recommendation is that this commission fund 11 grants in the amount of $517,205.74. That's slightly above the $500,000 that was allocated in the ARPA Framework Plan, but I have every confidence that we will save $17,205.74 somewhere else in the plan and be able to fully fund those. Alternatively, if one or more of those grants drops out for whatever reason is unable to be completed within the timeframe or provide appropriate grant agreement with us, there are two alternative projects that are recommended that we just slide those in. So staff's recommendation today is that the commission make tentative awards to the 11 projects as recommended by the committee, and that you then direct staff to work with each of the agencies that are listed there to finalize a grant agreement and bring those back to the commission for final approval. Our schedule for the grants is that we would hope to have those grant agreements approved approximately February 1st. That would give each of the agencies about two years to do their project until the end of January of 2024, so that we would know at that time whether we had any funding left over and could possibly go a little bit further down the list before the ARPA allocation period ends at the end of 2024. So with that, that is staff's recommendation. Again, I want to express appreciation to the committee and to all of the cities and water districts and sewer districts that submitted applications. I think you can see by the response that there was a significant need in the community. And at some point, when we get through other ARPA projects, we could possibly look at allocating some additional funding toward this. So that's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the commissioners?
The ones that aren't receiving any money, that their grants were not approved, do we intend to get in contact with those people and tell them why they didn't get it? Or is that on the chart or not?
Certainly, we intend to contact everyone who applied and let them know the results of the commission's action today. And as I said, I think, you know, there are some projects that we could consider for funding in the future if there's additional funding at the end of the process.
I know it was in your report, and the number went by me too quick, but the total amount of all of these projects? So these entities are putting about, I don't know, $290,000 monies in there to be used with the grants to make these projects take place. Is that correct?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That is the amount requested for county funding. I did not add up all the match, but you can see that there is significant match from each of the projects that's recommended.
We don't know that.
I didn't add it up, but I could.
But in looking at it, it is.
Yeah, many of the projects actually are matching more than a one-to-one, so.
But this ARPA funds gave a boost to have, to let these projects take place, and it's going to help a lot of the scattered all over our county, different communities that do some improvements that are much needed, so. Any other comments from commissioners, questions? Anyone in the public want to speak? If not, I'll turn it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we tentatively award funding to the 11 projects recommended by the review committee and direct staff to finalize grant agreements with each of the agencies and return for final commission approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we tentatively approve the 11 projects as outlined in RFA 280-21, ARPA Water Wastewater Grants. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number seven.
RFA 281-21, Resolution 21-2352, Meeting Dates for 2022 with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Hey, Philip.
Good morning again. This is the annual resolution to set your meeting dates for the succeeding calendar year. The recommendation this year is slightly different than in the past. We had a little conversation about this at your commission's visioning session on December 13th, and talked about providing the opportunity to have focused study sessions periodically throughout the year, possibly go out to different departments. And so the schedule is sort of a seven-and-one schedule, where we would be in this room on camera doing regular business meetings seven weeks in a row, and then would do a study session. This also provides for cancellation of four meetings throughout the year, which is a little bit different than has been done in the past. I'm hoping I captured the will of the commission as discussed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the commissioners?
Well, I like the study session part of this. I'm not in favor of canceling meetings and taking meeting dates out of the schedule.
I will mention, it is very common during the course of the year that we have special meetings also that were called together for business that comes on, that comes up that needs immediate attention. So I'm sure that in the future that we will have special meetings that will be required of us to take care of county business.
We'll still have the ability to call a special meeting at any time if something does come up.
Yes, sir. So Vice Chair is correct. There are typically a couple of meetings during the budget process, for example, where you meet off of a normal Tuesday cycle. The resolution, the charter resolution that the commission adopted in 2020 does provide for the ability of the chair to call special meetings as well as the ability to cancel regular meetings if there is no business to take place.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. This is Brad.
Yes, Brad.
I do have a hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
Sorry, I, thank you for interrupting there. Yes, it looks like Linda Lekleider would like to speak?
Yes. Ms. Lekleider, unmute and go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. If you go out to the different districts, will it be on Zoom where we can hear it?
Turn that over to the county administrator.
All meetings of the commission are public, so certainly wherever three or more of you are gathered, the public would be able to attend. Whether or not it could be broadcast via Zoom or some other platform is dependent on the technology available at the site. So for example, one of the things that commissioners have done in the past is to do a road tour, where you actually drive around with the Roden Bridge Department in like a van. It's not really possible to broadcast that because you're moving, but the public is able to come and ride along in the van if they like. Other meetings, it might be possible to do that. For example, if you were meeting at the Expo Center, they do have a robust Wi-Fi system out there, and we could set something up out there. So it will just depend on the type of meeting.
Question here, and thank you, Linda, for that question. These are study sessions that we're speaking of, correct?
Yes, so the intent is to do a study session, and that's really a non-action meeting. You would not be adopting resolutions and so forth. You would just really be there for the purpose of what I will say is learning about new problems and opportunities in various departments.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the commissioners for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2352 as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution 21-2352. All commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Vote is three to one. Motion carries. That concludes our action items. We'll now move into informational items. Item number one.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again. So just to briefly update the commission on transfer of funds as we approached the end of the year. The commission did approve a resolution calling for transfers of funds during the audit process, but we've gone ahead and moved a little bit of money with approval from the auditor. We checked with Mr. Hoffmeyer. We checked with Mr. Hoffmeyer. As the commission is aware, there are a number of delivery issues in the current environment for various types of equipment, and so in particular, the sheriff's vehicles and equipment, we are now being told they are likely to not even be built until the spring of 2022. So moved that funding as well as the EMS ambulance funding, moved some funding for Fire District Two to their special equipment fund for the same reason, and will be moving some money that IT had set aside for a firewall, again, based on a delivery problem. So just wanted to update the commission on that. That's all I have for this morning. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the administrator? One question. That money has been transferred and moved, but it is earmarked and spent. It's just at a later date, correct?
Yes, so technically, the funds are appropriated, or I'm sorry, encumbered once a contract is signed, and so they could just float in the general fund into next year. That creates some messiness from an accounting standpoint, so in talking with the audit firm, it's easier to just transfer it to the special equipment fund and then pay it out of the special equipment fund under the same contract as originally approved.
Thank you. Item number two.
Commissioner's comments.
I attended reducing criminal behavior meeting yesterday, and Annie, if you don't mind, would you kind of go over? I think you could say it a lot better than I did.
I'd be happy.
Good morning, Annie.
Morning. Thanks for asking.
Mainly about the housing and the portion of it, that some of the churches and some of your partners that you're working with.
Right.
Right.
So we went over everything under what do we have and what don't we have? So what's out there working well, what needs to be strengthened? Some of it is coming in March. We're going to do our diversion drug court. I use the word diversion. The judge used a suspended sentence, but when we met with all the parties on Friday morning for about two hours, it was determined diversion is really what it's going to be. That is going to be a start as a pilot project, so Community Corrections will just pick up those extra clients and staffing, and we're going to take about six clients and test the waters with a diversion drug court. The long short of it is they, should they be successful, they will not end up with a felony charge, which we all know the stigma is attached to felony clients. And so should they complete, their sentence will be diverted and not be on their record, and we'll go from there. So nothing will change as far as the drug court model, but we will consider that a small piece, which I'm very excited about all across the nation. That's what evidence-based research tells us we should be doing anyway. On the other thing was that, again, you all know that we're hoping to get ARPA funds for coresponders. Coresponders are those clinical people that ride along with law enforcement in our county, PD and Sheriff's Office. We understand that ARPA has to show sustainability. We already have some match because law enforcement is going to provide all the services as far as housing, uniforms, a vehicle, training. All those things will come from law enforcement. So we're hoping the match picks up. Community Corrections then also offers some sort of a match. The sustainability piece will be going out to our local mental health provider, the City of Salina, because at this point I'm not seeing that those funds are allocated from the City of Salina for these purposes, even though I would tell you that the largest usage will be the City of Salina because they do, the city where most of those homeless, mentally ill, severely mentally ill people are stopped on the street and the hospital. I think that we could ask the hospital ER to give us some money because we're going to cut down all the time they spend with us, and my staff and PD are sometimes there five and six hours waiting for some sort of a response. So as Commissioner Shabick mentioned, just recently Chad Young, along with Salina Grace, Community Corrections, and many other partners, but I'm thinking of funding partners, and the Salina Rescue Mission and Ashby House coordinated efforts, and we start a day center, Crisis Day Center on January third, I think that's correct. And that is going to be in the old Ashby House building on Seventh Street. It will allow Community Corrections, court services, anybody dealing with those high-risk, high-need clients that are mentally ill or substance abuse, whatever it is, to not arrest them, to not lock them down and bog up our jail with people that our jail staff currently are not equipped to handle, and take them to the day reporting center. Well, they'll receive food, shelter, assistance in mental health, substance abuse, you name it, they'll have it. Eventually, as it moves forward, several of us are going to house staff in the building at so much time a day, and then they can be referred to Salina Grace. We're looking at, they're looking at keeping Salina Grace open year-round. Right now, it's just a winter shelter, but with the money that's coming in and the need, they could go to the Salina Grace and return to the day center should they need that. Should people in our community services volunteer their staff to be there for a short period of time, they can go to one place and get everything they need. One of the things we know about our client population is that we expect too much from them, and I know some people probably think, you know, that's a crazy thought, but it's the truth. They don't think, and they don't have the cognitive ability to process a multitude of things. And so we're looking at, without overwhelming them and stressing them, they could go to one place and one day work on this issue, and next day work on this issue, and the providers have to continue to recycle people through, as far as I mean by staff. There was probably sixty-five to seventy providers there that day that this was announced, so I think that shows great initiative and great progress, and this fits very, very nicely with coresponders that are going out in the evenings and out at night with law enforcement, that they have a place to take them.
And law enforcement is very supportive.
Law enforcement came in full force. PD probably had, Police Department probably had five or six people there, and the Sheriff's Office had at least three, so very supportive of all of it. And I would tell you that this, we've been talking about these kind of efforts for years and how we want to stop locking down inappropriate, non-risk, just high-need people into our jail and prisons. The jail and prison currently cannot deal with this population, and they recycle through and recycle through and recycle through. So the Crime Reduction Committee, I was feeling a bit frustrated months ago, and now when we summed it all up and saw everything going on, I thank you for taking the time to appoint that committee and to have the group because we are doing amazing things right now. Also, I want to tell you that we'd hung up from our Zoom meetings. Phil was on and Commissioner Shabick, but we are going to do focus groups. We're going to do focus groups with our staff, my staff, Community Corrections, in addition to judges and law enforcement, and we're going to talk about how can we make sure we're not bogging down the client with too many things to do. You can't put someone on probation and give them fifty things to do, and halfway, fifty, et cetera, twenty things to do, and halfway through, somebody wants to know, how come they didn't do this, or how come they didn't? You know what? We spend sometimes twelve months just focusing on substance abuse or just focusing on mental illness. So we're going to do some focus groups and look at, we don't need standardized programming on everybody's probation. What we need is an assessment that tells us this individual definitely has the three things that we need to focus on, and to size those down, and then bring those to the judge and reshape the way our probation entries and journal entries look like. So that was the most recent thing, too, and I'm very excited. Did I answer everything?
Much better said than what I could do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. Any other commissioners?
I will say that I did attend the airport meeting last Wednesday. Virtually I attended. The airport authority is much more than just planes taking off and landing. I mean, they're in a huge real estate market, you know, with their rentals and the buildings that they sell and the land that they sell and everything. It's a city within a city out there, so that's an extremely viable part of our community. I guess the highlight that I took away with it was actually, though, with the departures and landings and so forth, that in the last month that they had, I think their level was nearly a thousand enplanements that used Salina Airport Authority, and they have expanded the terminal out there to where the walkway now is heated and air-conditioned for the hotter months, and so they can take a lot more people out there, which their terminal was very overcrowded to begin with, with the new flights that they've got. So that's the extent of that.
Any news on the Houston flight?
I think they're still trying to think about, you know, early spring.
Okay.
To get that going.
Good.
So, by the way, the one thousand enplanements is a drastic increase over the previous years, even pre-COVID, so Salina's being used, their airport is being used, not only by people from Celine County, but surrounding counties far as way as even Wichita that they're using our airport because of the price of the flights.
I will make mention, I was able to fly out with my son-in-law to Chicago, and he lives in Topeka and uses Kansas City Airport quite a bit. He was very impressed about the ease of getting on and off and the parking, just that, the expense, and made mention that if time allows or the connections allow, he would look at Salina as a start his departures out of versus Kansas City just for those reasons.
The money that we've, you know, given to the airport authority for advertisements and expansion and so forth is, in my opinion, very well spent. Very good use of taxpayer money.
To go back to Commissioner Shadwick's question, and Phil, you might be able to answer this, but did the Houston, Salina Houston have a, I know it was supposed to start in September, does the clock start running once the flights start? I know it was for a year program.
The contract is actually September one through August thirty-one, and so it has fixed dates, but Tim Rogers at Salina Airport Authority and I have been in constant contact about that. I said, do we need to, you know, go back in a minute? Tim's response has been, let's wait until we have a firm date, and then we'll go back and amend it. But yes, they would anticipate having to amend the contract.
Okay, thank you.
And I know also, should say that part of the delays is staffing, not staffing at Salina, but pilots and flight attendants and so forth. So that's a big part of the issue.
Okay, we'll go to item number three.
Announcements.
It was announced yesterday at Central Kansas Mental Health Board Meeting that Kathy Mosier, the executive director, is resigning, and she's going to be greatly missed. She's resigning for personal reasons, I've been told, and she's going to stick with us till, with the board till mid-March and even helping the hiring process. So the wheels are in motion for a new director for Central Kansas Mental Health, if anybody's interested.
Any other announcements?
I will just state that this building will be closed on Friday and next Monday. Most county employees, as well as City of Salina and building authority staff, have the Christmas holidays on Friday and Monday, so.
And speaking for the commission, if I may, I want to wish all our residents in Celine County a safe and happy holiday season, so. Anything else for the commission? If not, this meeting is adjourned.